...the Rapid County Plan Commission. Thank you, everybody, for making it. In light of the various challenges, we were a little unclear if we have a form. I appreciate everybody making it out. We do have a relatively right agenda this evening, and the first order of business is to adopt that agenda. So, I'm hoping so. Appreciate it.
Move to adopt the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, thank you. So, move on to the minutes review. We have two sets of minutes. The first from our work session of July 11th. I know some of you were not there. I looked at them and had any issues with them. Anybody have any thoughts or reaction to those minutes, July 11th? Here, my man. They want an decision to move to approve them. I'm trying to recall where you were not, and I obviously were not here. So, Rick, you and I are the only two who were here. So, maybe we should, maybe we should hold off.
I'd like to delay that.
Yeah, why don't we hold off on approving those minutes, give others the chance to see those who are actually here. Then we have the minutes from the July 18th meeting. I believe all of us, or maybe, I believe all of us were here for those, and I looked at those as well and didn't have any issues with them. Anyone have any feedback or comments on the July 18th meeting minutes?
I'm not confident I've received those minutes. Probably something while they're on board.
Well, that's probably the expectation.
I didn't see anything that needed to be corrected or read.
Okay. Can I ask that maybe move to approve the minutes as provided?
I approve to, I moved to approve the minutes that were provided.
Be a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I've been not reading the minutes, so I'll send.
Okay. I guess we have a majority of the quorum present, so we're okay on that. So, thank you. Then the next item on the agenda is the public comment period. I'll keep it brief. We ordinarily request that you keep your comments to three minutes. If you need four tonight, we could probably spare them, but I would ask if you had some comment to address them to the commission and first start off by identifying yourself and your, either your address or your district. We are not having hearings for any of the other items this evening, so I guess this would be the only opportunity for the public to speak. So, with that, we'll open the public comment period. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay. With that, I will close the public comment period, and we can move on to the first item of new business, which is the C.E. Johnson Agricultural Forest District Manual. Miss Summers, do you have something to say?
At 6:30 this evening, the advisory committee for the Ag and Forestry District met. They reviewed the applications for the district as well as the draft ordinance, which is the same, other than the tax parcels and acreage of that district. They recommended approval, the planning commissions and their approval to the board supervisors. They saw no issues with any of the applications or the draft ordinance.
Thank you. Could you clarify what you mean by the draft ordinance?
It's in draft form until it's actually codified and adopted by the board supervisors.
Oh, I see. So, the district itself is an amendment to the rules?
It's an appendix.
Is it an appendix to the law?
To the zoning ordinance. Just a little background, agricultural and forestal districts, they are completely voluntary. The perks to landowners being in those districts are that if Rapid County would decide tomorrow, they no longer want to participate and have land use taxation available for the county residents, the members within that district would still receive that tax rate, that reduced tax rate, until the end of the term of that district. Another benefit for landowners is that any district is to be taken into consideration when a land use application for increased intensity or commercial development is in that district or adjoins that district. Again, it's all voluntary for the members to be in it. So, this specific district started, was created in 1980, and over the years has been continually been renewed, and the members that have applied to be back in it were in it in the last district.
And refresh my memory, this allows them to have land use?
They have to qualify for the land use tax rate.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Summers. Any other questions or comments from any of the members? I believe continuing the precedent, if I, wait, this is in what district?
This is the C.E. Johnson District.
Looks like you do.
Piedmont. Piedmont, yes.
I thought it was. So, we're continuing to pick on the, our newest member here. Do you have any comments or questions, or do you want to move us on this, or perhaps refer to the others if you feel free to do so?
No, after reviewing the documents and everything like that, I don't see any reason why not to move to go ahead and approve it again. The only thing I do have, since I don't know, is it was for 10 years, whether to continue to do it for another 10 years.
Yes.
So, I move to go ahead and, or recommend for approval to some of the board supervisors for another 10-year period of time.
Is there a second to that motion?
Well, sorry.
Any further discussion? Chris, do you have anything?
No.
Completely agree with Ms. Summers. All right. Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Couldn't be. I heard everybody say aye. So, I think we can scratch that. Thank you very much. Moving on to old business, most of these are items that we had several discussions about. I think this evening our goal was to officially kind of update one another with status of progress and also perhaps refine the path that we're taking toward completing some of these long-term items. So, why don't we start from the top with consideration of the items being referred by the board supervisors.
I'll just, a brief update, I don't have a brief update, and Mr. Goff, Summers and I have a homework assignment from the board supervisors to put our heads together on these matters and provide some input back to the board. Mr. Goff's been rather busy, because we still have minutes for today, preparing for trial, so that we expect to be making some progress on that between now and then.
Great. Thank you for that update. Yeah, my only observation on this share is that in some ways this overlaps the subject matter of these topics that have been directed to us, you know, overlap in some ways with what we've already been discussing, or at least in some measure. So, you know, from my point of view, I think we, until we get through a clarity in a particular direction or a take, I would tend to have the commission continue to make a priority on getting the comprehensive plan worked out, and we'll deal with these items as they come up. But we certainly look forward to any further clarification on what exactly that better approach is possible. Does that seem appropriate?
I don't know the position of the board relative to priority, but my conjecture would be that they would want you to focus on the comprehensive plan as well, and that the comprehensive plan should lead the changes to the ordinance. So, if it fits well, both are important, and I'm sure they want both done as quickly as possible.
All right. Any further discussion or commentary on that?
Does it make any sense to have a committee or, does the committee just start looking at these right now?
Again, to me, the, these are, if I'm recalling correctly, that these are, you know, the topics that we're talking about here are, you know, transient lodging, signage, pretty broad topics.
Well, there's focus, a focus on signage, too. A particular neural sign issue, there's, that's of particular interest to the board. And then the tourist home, as you called now, is of particular interest to the board in getting those definitions straight and permitting straight, which is also of interest to the BCA and to the planning commission.
And something that has been on the list. So, what I would like to do is continue to ask staff to drive this process and bring it forward, you know, material or help us in this process. I do think we should be working toward, I would suggest that we have another work session on these matters, but again, until, given that they are so broad and that they are tied and need to follow from what is in the comprehensive plan, I would like to continue as much as we can without, you know, continuing to do the work that's been asked of us to focus on continuing this comprehensive plan, and have these other items, you know, fill in as we, as we can address them. But again, I don't know that we've gotten a direction to support that view or consider a different view as from a supervisor.
I'll just say that the board wants the planning commission's input on these matters, and not just staff's input on these matters. The members of the commission were appointed to consider land use matters, and so it's appropriate for the commission to make sure your voice is heard in that process, and ultimately will, because you will have to hold a public hearing and go through that process. But it's important that what eventually comes to the commission and then to the board is something the commission is comfortable with, and it's not just driven by two or three staff members.
Right. So, I guess the question is, what is the sort of, getting started here? I suppose we could have a work session where we try to discuss this, these topics among the, you know, among the commissioners, but it seems to me that that would be more fruitful if we had, you know, some examples of how some of these things are dealt with from elsewhere, you know, something that tees up what the current state of play is. So, I guess when I say refer to staff, that's what I was.
Right, and I think we can do that.
Refer to and guidance on how, how we care for them. But I think, to me, the next step for the commission would be to schedule a work session around it.
The work that the board is asking of myself and Chairman are, is probably consistent with what you would want to see as well.
Right.
And certainly that can be made available as input to a work session or committee, or however you choose to handle that.
Give us direction in what you all want to see in draft form.
Well, we, so we can either have a work session, or we can have a committee, or we can have, I don't know, go about it. I guess we need to.
And I think that's important, that we need to decide how to move forward, what structure we're going to follow.
Yeah, I'm sorry to speak from the gallery here, but also, as you mentioned earlier, Chairman, your priority, right? And so, if comprehensive plan is priority number one, and these zoning changes is referred by the board, as well as the main amendments and others are priority number one A, that is important for you to understand, so that you can methodically work through this challenge. It's a lot of work between the comp plan and the zoning ordinance amendments, so getting on the same page as a group on how you're going to, as I said to somebody else, eat the elephant, which is, you know, it's a big undertaking. That is important, so coming to conclusion for your group of what that priority is, is I think important.
Rick, you introduced the idea of a committee. I was imagining that we would work more in a work session. We don't have, it's not been our tradition to do subcommittees or break in, but are you bringing that up as purely a question, or are you suggesting that?
No, it's a question of how we want to proceed. I'm happy to do some research on my own and bring it to a work session.
To me, that's generally more the way we've carried it out. We're not, we're not a very large group. It's generally more challenging for folks to, you know, have a separate set of meetings for committees of the commission. So, my proposal would be, if it's the will of the commission, that that's the approach that we take, that we schedule a work session with the proper notice and participation, that we work with Mr. Currie and Ms. Summers on, you know, providing kind of the background materials that are relevant to the discussion, and we do our homework individually in preparation for that work session, and then we get together and work through it. Does that seem?
That's what I'm arguing.
You're speaking to the current items, or the zoning amendments?
The zoning.
And not the comp plan?
I am talking about the zoning amendments, but it's going to sound a lot like some of the other topics, because I think this is clearly our MO. So, I don't know, Ms. Silver or Mr. Bird, do you have any thoughts on how?
Well, it seems, we're kind of in a chicken and egg situation here, where the zoning ordinance depends on the comprehensive plan, so that that needs to be at least firmed up so that we can work from it. And I don't see any reason why we can't do that, do both of those at one work session and deal with those parts of the comprehensive plan that pertain to the particular zoning ordinances that we want to deal with.
Sure.
And it does seem to me, I get this from my experience on the Board of Zoning Appeals, where the zoning ordinance just really doesn't bear any relationship to the problems that we are facing now, and so that ought to be dealt with as quickly and expeditiously as we could, particularly the tourist homes, bed and breakfasts, and those kinds of definitions and ordinances. So, I would think that if we could have a work session and target the comprehensive plan aspect with the particular ordinances that we are trying to figure and change, that would be a reasonably fruitful way of doing it. We could probably do it in one work session.
Appreciate your optimism.
You are optimistic.
Thank God everyone's fairly. Jerry, you have any?
Since I missed the first meeting around the comprehensive plan, but on everything I've ever done, comprehensive plan leads into the others, so I'm in agreement that I think you have to look at the overall picture first and then dive into the individual section. Whether we do it all in one meeting or not is, would be great, but yeah, I think we need to get the umbrella first and then put the pieces in it.
All right, thank you. So, here's what I'd love to suggest. I know we're missing three commissioners tonight, so it's going to be hard to reach strong scheduling, and I haven't been through this before. I know that it's very challenging, but I, what is our notice requirement for a work session? How much?
Three days.
Just three days? Okay. I would, it seems to me that what we've, what's been successful in the past is picking an afternoon of a Wednesday. Given that several of the folks who are at this week may not be available, I could say that next Wednesday is probably off the table, but it's off the table for many reasons. Okay. So, if we could start to look at two Wednesdays and three Wednesdays out, and again, I don't think we're going to, I mean, should the way be clear for one of those dates for the afternoon session?
August 29th is the board design and field meeting.
At 7:00 P.M.
At 7:00 P.M., correct.
Mr. Bird, is the available prior?
Yes.
September 5th is the board of supervisors.
Yep. Oh, September 5th is the board of supervisors. Is there an actual Wednesday because of the?
Later.
I think two weeks would be preferable to three from now, because, you know, we may, we don't get finished, it'd be nice to be able to maybe schedule something to try to finalize before the next, our next regular meeting.
So, Ms. Summers, when you mentioned that the BCA meeting is on the 29th, does that, does that mean?
After the sun.
Does that mean you will have an afternoon to meet? Actually, looking at this and I could not do.
Relative to the comp plan, what is the commission looking for from staff? So far, staff has worked with Rapid County Rapid County Regional Commission to update data, and we know from the last work session, there's some corrections needed for that. But are you wanting staff to lead in the revision narrative, to align with the data and pick up all the changes that have happened before, and present a draft to the commission? Are you wanting the commissioner or commissioners through work session to do that editing?
Certainly not the commissioners to do the editing, and thank you for asking the question. I, my view of what we're looking for, and I thought we had established this, but perhaps only in my mind, that once we had sort of discussed and reviewed the individual tables, that the next step that we had asked staff to take would be to sort of integrate those tables, and by integrating meaning kind of revise the text surrounding those in those first four chapters, the sort of basic demographic chapters. And at that point, I believe the commission would have the opportunity to take a look at the whole. Now, I know, and we're kind of jumping ahead a little bit, because the comp plan is further on the agenda, these things are so intimately tied to one another, it's hard to separate them. I know that we also have some new faces on the commission who have not been part of the, at the table during the last rounds of the comp plan. It's my intention to try to keep focused and moving forward and not sort of rehash the entire, the entire plan again in a work session, but I think it would be unreasonable, especially given that we're going to end up going out for public comment anyway, to not allow the new members of the commission or others who, with passage of time and development of events, to come forward with any other changes that they would like to bring forward in that meeting. But I'm not expecting, so I'm expecting the staff to integrate the data, chapter one through four, and bring that to a work session at which the commissioners would take a look at that and bring any other, you know, last call kinds of changes that we want to make before we push this thing out for public comment.
So, I asked that little question, thinking back to your schedule, and what is it then you would want staff to provide you at the work session?
Well, this gets to, again, the, for that one, if we, if we had time, it would be nice to have the revised chapters one through four with the data. Now, given that we've got these other matters, it seems to me we should schedule a work session, and if that's not ready, then we can focus on some of the other matters. But that, with respect to the comprehensive plan, the next step I see is to have the, to have those chapters one through four in the, you know, a final draft state as far as the staff update is concerned. Is that consistent with you?
That seems to make perfect sense, but for what I gathered, that is mostly a factual thing, and so that it shouldn't take a great deal of discussion or amendment, it wouldn't seem to be, and it would just be a question of proving it can, at that point, pass me on to the supervisor.
I think that's right. I think that the challenge here is that does, that it doesn't require much time of us to take a look at that, but that's probably still some lifting on the part of the staff to get that work done.
We have discussed that, and we'll just get that done, but we will.
So, again, going back to, there's no point in, so that's our priority, but if the commission is ready to get together and we can not have that, and we, I mean, I would hate to distract staff attention from that to the items for the other matters, because your question implied, what else would you like to see from the staff? But I think from the staff, with respect to the zoning amendments and the matters from the, directed to us by the supervisors, what I would like to see and have brought to that is examples of legislate, you know, similar ordinances from surrounding counties or other models, or, you know, guidance from oil and play from other planning organizations that I think you have a better understanding of and can bring to that table. Whether you get distracted from the comprehensive plan effort in order to go look for those things, I guess is the matter where prioritization goes into play. Me personally, I'd really like to see the comprehensive plan finished. Is that, anything?
I think that's fine, and I think a lot of the research that you're talking about with other counties and other organizations is relatively easily found over the internet.
Sure.
And can be downloaded, printed out, and so that, that doesn't seem a terribly onerous effort. I don't know what's involved in rewriting the chapters one to four. I wasn't at the last work session, and so.
I think it's just, there's a lot of tables and a lot of text and a lot, so it's just sort of, you know, the production of it, that, you know, it's the thing that kind of bogged us down the first time in a way, but now we've got part of it, where we have the data updated, but you still have to produce the document. So, I guess going back to where we were with respect to scheduling a session.
Does two weeks offer time for some part of that?
It offers time. I'm not sure if it's enough time.
Okay. Well, I think then what Gary was saying about trying to deal with the ordinance, if that isn't completely ready.
You can also speak to chapters six and seven at a work session.
That's true.
Data is not going to inform the, those other sections all that much, that it's so much different than what's already created in the older.
So, what I would propose is that we, because of the scarcity of the time of the commissioners, when we can truly all agree to get a quorum together for a, for such a work session, especially when three of them aren't here tonight to even speak to this, I'd suggest that we look at the 29th, the 5th, I think, has got to be out because of the supervisors' meeting being that day.
The show would need to be, if the evening meeting, possibly a date.
A date. So, it's probably, we're looking at the 29th or the 12th, and if we can make the 20, and then we find the date and we put together as much of the supporting materials in any of these last three items as we can, and we hash out a productive agenda for that, for that meeting. And that may be different if it's on the 15th than if it's on the 29th, or sorry, the 29th, if it works, it's on the 12th. Does that, does that work?
That's a very.
Pragmatic approach to.
Yeah, she's very.
sizing to fit.
Yeah.
Okay. So, sorry? You know, I think we should ask, you know, I would say that I start looking as early as, as one, but I can imagine, I'm not even sure that I can be here at one on those sort of days. So, I'd say what we need to do is just query folks and figure out what their availability is on those, those days. I know generally it's easier to start, I mean, does anybody know now that they would not be available on either of those afternoons of the 29th or the 12th? of the 29th or the 12th?
No, I'd write none. I have nothing to skip over on those afternoons.
I actually had a job interview with someone at my job on the afternoon of the 29th, but I... In the back of my mind, I think this person is no longer a candidate. So I'm not going to rule it out on that basis. So let's just follow up with everybody. So I'm sorry to jump around a bit on that, but I think we really essentially partially touched on each of the three items of old business. I guess the other item with respect to the draft zoning ordinance amendments, Summer could review a markup of the items that at our last work session, we identified as sort of ready to move forward. And our request, she has marked those up. I think she distributed them by email. Not yet on board docs. I'm sure they'll be on board docs soon. So to me, the one... The question that comes out of those is, you know, there... Is there enough there to... There's really, there's two questions. One of the matters... One of the items that is not addressed in there that we really haven't come to terms with is the one that... Where there was a legal question and we still have not heard from council. Do you have that table in front of you? Which one is? Number four? Yes. So this was the matter of the revocability of these permits. This was one that I think the commission had no particular concern about. There was consensus around it. Legal, County Attorney had made a point that this might... This one might... Wait a minute. This is the one we did do. Is this not it?
No, I didn't add that one. I'm sorry.
You just didn't add this one?
No, I did add this one.
You did add this one?
It was the one that we did have a question for. I did not add that.
I have that on this table.
Right.
So there was one matter that we said we couldn't even really decide if it was a no-brainer or not. We didn't have clarity on what the legal issue was associated with it. In my mind, if a legal question is... Could be cleared up, we might want to put that in this early... Or in this early version of a revision and not let it languish until all the other stickier items are required. The point being, if you look at what's been marked up, the changes are not very significant. And it raises the question, is it worth going through the entire exercise of having a public hearing and going through the process of revising the amendments just for those few items? You know, it's things like changing the Department of Highways to the Department of Transportation. I mean, it's not... They're pretty cleaned up. So I'm comfortable going forward, but the idea when we had our work session was that we go ahead and move forward with the low-hanging fruit, if you will. The changes that were... Where there was unanimity, they were clear and they were ready to go. That set of changes is what is reflected in the draft markup that Michelle sent around earlier today or yesterday. The question that draft raises to me is if those are the only changes that are ready to go, is it really worth going forward to a hearing and a publication of that? I raise that to the commissioners, either to address tonight or when we have a chance to look at that markup. Because there's really not... I mean, it addresses the VDOT change, the...
The VDOT reference, instead of... Highways and transportation.
There's a reference to any... There's some cleanup of references to be... To any state law versus some specific ones. There's the question for family apartments. Is that what this... Yeah, additional standards. Where we removed one of the requirements. And for the family subdivision, there's a consensus that to remove the two-year limit on that time period, make it sort of...
Family apartment.
For the...
Family apartment.
Personally, I don't think family apartment is... So it's not the family subdivision. The family apartment provision. Be always restricted to a member of the family. So there's some substance there. Those were the ones that I thought that there was no further debate among ourselves. Now, the question is, are we good to go on the markup? And to me, there's still a question that if we could get a legal clarity on the revocation item, it might make sense to try to sweep that into this first step. Anybody have any... I'm... When you're going here now, does anybody have any other thoughts on this or any suggestion?
It seems that's kind of what we need to do, to go through it okay and send it on. And I don't... Can we do that? Everything that Michelle said earlier today seemed very kind of pro forma. Stop that. But it is a change. It needs to be... And it seems to me that could be dealt with rather quickly, easily.
Could I ask you, Ms. Summers and you and Mr. Curry, do you think those... When we attempted to put the easy stuff in a package, is the package worth move on? Or did we make it so light that we're not... You know, it's not worth proceeding? I mean, I guess I'm wondering if you guys...
The risk of stepping on the shelves, so it's on doing it.
Go ahead.
When I read that, I asked the question, what of these changes are substantive changes and would change the way people would go about permitting their whatever? And it was fair. So to that effect, there's less value in going through the process twice or three times, however many times it takes to get it through. And if there are particular issues in there, and one that's not in there, just throw out there just because it's been talked about. So like the two and five acres versus the 10 acres for the tourist home and ag and conservation. If there were something significant that would really impact what a citizen is permitted to do or not do, then I would think that may be a time-sensitive item that you would want to make sure you get through quickly. Definition changes and, you know, code citations and things like that is probably not worth the effort to get that done quickly. But I did spend a lot of time reviewing the data. So there may be one or two things in there that were substantive and the rest are just...
I'd say there are two that meet your definition of substantive. One is the change of the standards for efficiency apartments, where we proposed changing it. It used to say there can be no more than 800 square feet.
Right. 600 square feet.
600 square feet.
25%.
4.5%.
Now it's flat 800.
We're just making it flat 800. And we do see those. And I know in my time on the commission, we have dealt with this issue of 25%. And it's been, you know, something of a challenge because what we're seeing these, you know, 10,000 square foot homes with 2500 square foot, you know, efficiency apartments. So I do think that is not a trivial matter, but it's, you know, it is what it is. And the second is the additional standards for family apartments. Right now, as it's on the books, the code says the apartment may not be occupied by or rented to anyone other than a family member for a period of two years following completion thereof. The proposal is to scratch the for a period of two years following the completion thereof and have the family apartments be limited to family members indefinitely. So those are substantive, perhaps not as much as some of the other things that are still working on. But again, I think Mr. Curry put it more articulate than I did. Is this... Is that level of change enough to proceed as we had intended with a kind of a first round of review? Or do we delay it and try to get some more into the package to make it worth the topic? Michelle, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I also don't know where the Board of Supervisors stands on those two particular issues, if they're inclined to support them, if the community supports them or not. So that would be the other input, whether they stand a chance to be approved. And Mr. Parrish was involved, so...
Yeah. I mean, to me, what this represents, just to put this back in context, is we were given this set of proposed very specific amendments. These are the ones that have sort of made it through to me, you know, a pretty thorough vetting process. The rest have been held up by either our own sort of discomfort within staff concerns or legal concerns. That's why we led to the point of proposing to have at least an initial step where we deal with some of the easier items.
And what we can do is take the next item, the tourist homes, work on that, then add it to this package and keep going, you know, until we have that package complete. So we're not trying to digest it all at one time. We have these simple changes we agreed on. Everybody agrees. Let's move on to the next one. Let's decide how we want to address that specific topic, how we would like to see that changed. Get a draft, get an agreement, add it to the package and just keep going until we have that package complete, just send to public hearing and then on to the Board of Supervisors.
Are we comfortable that none of these... I know we looked at them all individually. None of them overlap and give me kind of a...
Well, not with one.
...precedent for us having a hearing that would maybe overlap into one of these other ones that's coming up?
I think not. I think that part of the reason that we sort of took out the entire set of tourist home related ones and bed and breakfast related ones is that those do sort of interplay with one. You can't, you know, they're part of an inseparable set. These are pretty independent of one another. So perhaps a path forward that I want to recommend is let's have our next work session. Let's have reviewing that markup as part of that. And also perhaps give ourselves one more opportunity to see if there's anything... Any other changes from the various sources that we've had that we feel are sufficiently well-developed and agreed upon that we could get in this set. As it stands, I sort of assess this to say it's not really worth the public exercise of going through this. So let's... We don't want to wait till we're finished with everything, but I'm proposing that we try to get a little bit more in the initial package. We can still consider taking this in two steps, but that we conclude that we're not quite yet at a sensible step one.
My only thought there would be that I can see this taking a fairly good time of our work session. And I know the comp plan is high priority. And we may end up not having as much time on the comp plan.
Well, I think by definition, if it takes a lot of our time to add some... I mean, it's incumbent on us to review the markup that we've been given anyway. Right? We've all received that now. It's incumbent on us to review it and be prepared to address it at our next meeting. So I think all I'm suggesting is that in addition to looking at it in that context, we come to that work session and see if there's any quick consensus on any of these other changes that we ought to try to get into a first package. If it takes a lot of our time to discuss it, it fails the test. Right? Because we don't want to spend a lot of that time. We've got to see if there's any other, like, sort of no brainers in here we want to get. If there are not, then I'd say we keep working on the comprehensive plan and we don't go forward this step, a two-step process. We wait till we're ready to, you know, do a bigger package. But I think at the end of the day, we'll still end up doing this in stages. I can't imagine that we will wait to do a set of revisions until we've sorted out all of these matters before us. I just don't think what we've done in our first work session has reached the level that it's worth going out. Anybody have any other thoughts on that? So please take a look at the markup. Take a look at the consensus. We'll try to get legal input on the revocation provision because if that were added, perhaps we would sort of reach a level of substantive, you know, value. And, you know, we'll take this up at our work session. Be mindful, we don't want to be distracted by the comp plan discussion.
It sounds good to me. And I think we can deal with it somewhat. I have an agenda which deals with the comprehensive plan first. And this, the zoning ordinance is second. And so that would let us do both with an accent on the comprehensive plan.
And if we find... I mean, basically, we're in a position where until we have a couple of other changes that we think are ready to go, we don't see a reason to proceed with this markup. What we need to do is just keep working forward until we have enough that we feel it's worth taking the public and the supervisors and staff's time to put it out. All right. Well, I'm sorry. I feel like I'm taking what should have been a short meeting to begin with and making it ever longer. Anybody have any other... Ms. Summers, is there anything else on matters of old business that you wanted to bring to the function of the commission this evening?
No, sir.
Anybody else have any parting thoughts on that? Mr. Curry, do you have anything else to say?
Though that Michelle and I will get together, we'll discuss comp plan edits and how we can tag team to get something back to you as quickly as possible.
Okay.
And then obviously, we will also be meeting with Mr. Goff or Mr. Luke, who is now newly appointed to be the deputy county attorney to turn around some of these other items.
Great. Thank you very much. Unless anybody has anything else to bring up on those topics, I think we're through with the old business. And our next scheduled meeting of the official meeting would be September 19th. But stay tuned for an effort to schedule a work session along with the discussion. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So...
Second. All of them stand up and go home. Thank you very much.
Quickie quiz. Chapter six.